I'd like to call the February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four Wilson County Commission meeting. Welcome all of our guests tonight and invite you to come back at any opportunity that you might have. Before we start our meeting tonight, it was about this time last night that we lost a good man in Wilson County by the name of Quentin Smith. His daddy, many of you may remember, was road superintendent here for quite some time. And Quentin, he served his county well. He was one of you in nineteen-seventy-six to nineteen-seventy-eight. And I go back and say, I'd say he gave us all of Wilson County through agriculture, through the James Award Act Center, through politics, getting things done, through the love of his family. He was a worker and he was a giver. And if you loved him well, he had the heart of Texas. If he loved you, he'd give anything he had. He didn't love everybody. But if he loved you, you were in good shape. He ran the James Award Act Center like a roller machine. Can't remember many times that that place didn't look like a golf course. His famous words, as you remember, "I just hate trash." That was his words. He was devoted with that job. I remember when the time was going on, Jeff Jones will remember this, people were saying, "You ought to get Quentin Smith to be the director." And I stupidly said, "I don't think so." I said, "Quentin, he don't have time to do this. He got a big farm." But I was wrong. He spent twenty-four seven out there. I signed his time sheet every two weeks. And it's amazing about a time that he gave that place. He'll never replace him, Quentin Smith. That won't happen. And he'll go down in history as a man. And I'll let you finish that answer because he was a lot of things to a lot of people. We hardly liked cats and dogs, but I loved him. And he loved you and everybody that he could serve in this county. I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment, silence in his honor. I'm going to ask you to remain standing as I introduce Commissioner Tommy Jones now for the prayer and pledge for tonight.
I need to remember, got to do something just a little unusual tonight. I asked two people to come tonight, one to lead us in prayer and one to lead the pledge. I asked the other brother, Robert Spickard, from Hampton Chapel Church to come lead us in prayer. First Sergeant Jeff Jones retired to lead the pledge for us tonight. If y'all will come on up here, we'll get that going. But just one, while they're coming, just four words out of the pledge. I take away from the pledge, but one nation under God. Let's all try to live with that, try to be that. Come right here.
Thank you, Tommy, for the opportunity. Amongst the ones I'm going to pray for tonight, we also will remember the remnant of Quentin Smith. I'm going to pray Romans thirteen, verses one through four. Lord, we stand, we give, and we give thanks to you for all that you've done, all you've done for the love and the gracious gifts that you've given unto us, especially the plan of salvation. Thank you for the urgent care that you've shown toward this city, this county, the county at large, the many communities governed under and by these fearless firemen, men and women, the paramedics, the governing officials, the county mayor, city mayor, all lawgivers. We bow our heads to thank you for them tonight, for the justice system, for the judges and the lawyers. We give you thanks. We praise your name for the correction of systems, the many, many men and women who serve as in uniform, who are foreign soldiers tonight, our soldiers. We thank you for the policing of the state by those that wear the uniforms. We thank you, O God, tonight for the service of the bondsmen, the bankers, even the bakers that oversee these communities and the county and the state. Thank you for those that maintain the roads, department, sewer, stormwater, utility districts. We give your name the highest praise for all the educators, the tireless school board, the workers of all, the bus drivers and the monitors. May these have, those who have great knowledge, perform operations on men and on animals, be given special notice tonight in our hour of prayer, the doctors and the nurses. The Lord keep our inordinate spiritual leaders and all pastors and your church leaders clean. Let, dear Lord, the many higher learning institutions be established with credibility. This city and all that is being lit, let it be lit by the light of your presence. And Lord, tonight, as we close this prayer, we thank you for this council meeting tonight and those that will have a part in it. I ask for you to give them a sound mind and understanding that their governing authority comes under Romans thirteen, one through four. Those authorities are given by your will and by your permission. In the powerful, precious, prolific name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pledge, will you plead?
Pledge, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation with no doubt, indivisible, with dignity and justice alone.
Thank you both.
These two men, they're people that I look up to. They both have been great, great friends and community that I've grown up in. I just can't sing their praises enough. Thank y'all.
Thank you both. We will now press your presence on your power for tonight to record your attendance, please. Twenty-four present, one absent. Pastor Denton is out tonight. This time we'll have a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before the county commission that wants to speak about something that is on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none on public comment, we will close public comment report. The steering committee, Commissioner Fields.
Steering committee of the county commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, made in regular session on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the upstairs conference room. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. I moved that they be received and filed.
Got a motion, second discussion. Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda is in everybody's packet and I make a motion that we amend that tonight because we haven't a legislative ad hoc committee meeting that was not included in the original agenda. So I make a motion that the current agenda be amended.
Okay. Okay. Got a motion, second, on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're voting on the agenda. Any discussion on that? Vote as amended, don't hear a motion.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a consent agenda. There are two resolutions, both involve line out and transfer. I moved that they be a motion to approve.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion on that? We'll call a vote. We call it its money, so if you will, please press your vote on the panel if you're ready to vote. Commissioner Gentry, all hearts and minds, give a vote. Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Twenty-four, yes. One absent, resolution passes. This time I ask Commissioner Williams to come, follow with special recognition.
This evening, we have two different basketball teams, both from Mount Juliet Middle School, who had amazing seasons this year. Both of them made it to the final four. So if the boys team could come up first, please, I'd love to have you come join me up here at the podium. And as you're walking up here, I have worked very hard to make sure I pronounce everybody's names properly, so hopefully I do so and do justice to everyone. I did get some hints. My daughter Tamsin helped me out. That's ready? All right. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the Mount Juliet Middle School Boys Basketball Team. Whereas the Mount Juliet Middle School Basketball Team finished the season with an overall season record of twenty-five wins and four losses. And whereas this team of talented young men were the undefeated county champions, undefeated area champions, and undefeated sectional champions. And whereas the boys basketball team also won the Christmas tournament. And whereas in their state tournament appearance, the team made it all the way to the final four. And whereas the members of the Mount Juliet Bears Basketball Team include eighth graders Brady Coleman, Ryan Dixon, Andrew Engelhardt, Hudson Garrick, Heath Hawks, Isaac Huets, Liam Lindville, Leighton Plummer, Will Sloan, Jacob Tuberville, Jaden Varpness. And whereas seventh graders on the team include Weston Carver, Aiden Latta, and Kingston McDowell. Whereas this team was coached by head coach Jeremy Hawks and assistant coaches Clay Hawks and J.J. Lucas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that this resolution be presented to head coach Jeremy Hawks and each member of the team and coaching staff for display at Mount Juliet Middle School in recognition of the outstanding season of the Mount Juliet Middle School Bears Boys Basketball Team.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Coach Hawks, I've got a copy of the resolution for all of the players and coaches and then one for the school. Would you like to say something?
It can be the other Coach Hawks. It can be whoever would like to say. It could be another voice. I'll say a quick word. This was a really good group of boys to coach. The big thing that I will say is, obviously, we were here last year, which is a super cool thing. Hopefully, we can make this a yearly occurrence. But last year, I was told at the end of this year to enjoy it because we wouldn't be back this year. So it was a great run and I couldn't be more proud of this group. And they have some big things ahead of them and I can't wait to watch them. So thank you for letting us be here tonight and thank you guys for letting me be a part of the journey.
Johnson, do you want to come by the podium and say your name as you file out?
Congratulations.
Weston Carver. Brady Coleman. Jacob Tuberville. Jaden Varpness. Andrew Engelhardt. Liam Lindville. Kingston McDowell. Heath Hawks. Clay Hawks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Like I said, Mount Juliet Middle School really showed up this year. So the girls also made it to the final four. So if the girls team will come up and join me here. Do you want to do some over here? It doesn't matter. That way, everybody, because you guys have a big group, which is good. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the Mount Juliet Middle School Girls Basketball Team. Whereas the Mount Juliet Middle School Girls Basketball Team finished the season with an overall season record of twenty-two wins and seven losses. Whereas this team of talented young women were the area eleven champions, section three champions, and triple-A state runners-up. And whereas the members of the Mount Juliet Bears Girls Basketball Team included eighth graders Gia Ficatio, Reed McLean, McKinley Stone, and Taylor Watson. And whereas seventh graders on the team include Elliott Earhart, Sophie Freeman, Juliana Mitchell, Zoya Nichols, Kennedy Simmons, Wendy Van Hoes, and Natalie Williams. And whereas sixth graders on the team include Sawyer Bates, Amory Hawks, Caroline Proctor, Caleb Varpness, and Ryland Workings. And whereas this team was supported by two great managers, Shirley Martinez, eighth grade, and Grayson McLean, in sixth grade. Whereas this team was coached by head coach Nicole DeFevers and assistant coaches Denise DeFevers and Allison Smith. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that this resolution be presented to head coach Nicole DeFevers and to each member of the team and coaching staff for display at Mount Juliet Middle School in recognition of the outstanding season of the Mount Juliet Middle School Bears Girls Basketball Team.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Coach DeFevers, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you for having us. It's been quite a while since the Mount Juliet Middle School Team, Girls Team, has made it this far. And it was a very exciting season. Our girls played really hard. They worked hard. I want to thank their parents. They put in countless hours. So I'm excited that they get to see these girls up here, recognized for all their hard work and accomplishments. And hopefully, we will be like the boys and we'll be back sooner rather than later. So thank you all so much for having us.
And girls, as you go back, if you want to stop by the podium and say your name.
McKinley Stone.
Reed McLean.
Taylor Watson.
Gia Ficatio.
Caleb Varpness.
Wendy Van Hoes.
Juliana Mitchell.
Zoya Nichols.
Caroline Proctor.
Elliott Earhart.
Amory Hawks.
Sawyer Bates.
Natalie Williams.
Nadie Seven.
Coach DeFevers. Denise DeFevers.
Outstanding job of both teams there. And those coaches live in a good neighborhood, by the way, as well. They live in my neighborhood.
I'm up here tonight to recognize one other team player. Ms. Scruggs, would you come up here, please? Resolution twenty-four dash two dash twenty-one, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, in honor of Wilson County Animal Control Director Scruggs, many years of service. Whereas Director Scruggs began her public service in animal control in nineteen-ninety-six, serving through nineteen-ninety-nine as a manager of the Humane Society of Wilson County. And Director Scruggs then proceeded in nineteen-ninety-nine to become the Animal Control Officer, Manager of the City of Lebanon Animal Control, a position she held until two thousand and one. And in two thousand and eleven, Director Scruggs accepted the position as Director of the Wilson County Animal Control, where she has dedicated many years of hard work and determination. And over the course of her career, Director Scruggs has received many additional certifications mentioned in previous resolutions adopted by the county commission in twenty-twenty, commending the work done in her position as director. And in her thirteen years of service with Wilson County Animal Control, Director Scruggs has worked countless hours assisting and educating the citizens of Wilson County while also maintaining a work environment for which she has commended her employees. And noted that the Director Scruggs thanked them each and every day for their hard work and made them feel like an asset to the team. And although the job is not an easy one and the things you may see on a day-to-day basis can be daunting, Director Scruggs managed to keep the focus on the education and encouragement for pet and animal safety. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize and express our appreciation to Director Scruggs for her many years of service as Wilson County Animal Control Director, her dedication to making life better for all Wilson Countyans, and we wish her the very best as she enters into her much-deserved retirement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm a doer, I'm not a cooker. Anyway, thank you, everybody. I loved my job. I loved my team, all the Wilson County employees. Y'all been great. And it's hard leaving a job you love, but life goes on. Anyway, thank you, everybody. I appreciate you all.
Ms. Scruggs, I would like to have just a word, if I could. I don't know if the commission remembers back before, but Ms. Scruggs was here. We had moved animal control from one place to the other before we got here in two thousand and ten and actually went through about a $2 million lawsuit that dealt with that. And then the commission said, you know, let's have our own department. So we went for a search and we found Ms. Mary and we had gotten several calls in the office about animals and issues and all of that. And when Ms. Mary came on board, we didn't get any more calls. She took care of that program, built it from the ground up, did an outstanding job of taking care of the people and the animals of this county. And I can't thank you enough. No calls was a great addition to us. And so thank you for what you did and the way you took that program and the way you've improved it. This time, I would like to also introduce your successor, Mr. Steve Gatlin. If you would stand in the back, Mr. Steve will be taking Ms. Mary's place, already taking Ms. Mary's place. He's a longtime employee for the Wilson County Sheriff's Department as well. But Ms. Mary, thank you for everything that you did for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes. She just said for Terry to keep working. He couldn't retire. There is no public hearing tonight, Mr. Tom. No public hearing, so we move the report for the minutes committee. Commissioner Fields.
Minutes committee of the county commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, made in a regular session on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the upstairs conference room. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. I moved that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Read in the minutes.
Motion to dispense from reading of the minutes.
Say. Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lot of highs and lows tonight, but this is definitely a high. Mr. Bender, would you please stand up? I want everybody to see you. This is Mr. William Bender. Mr. Bender, I'm going to let you sit back down as I read this proclamation to you. Whereas January the fourth, twenty-twenty-four marks the hundred-and-third birthday of Mr. William H. Bender. Born in Silver Springs Community of Mount Juliet in nineteen-twenty-one, to Finley and Irma Bender and the grandson of Pleas and Laura Bender, William has led an extraordinary life, which he attributes to in his own words, "A major part of this celebration is the source of life, Jesus Christ, the Trinity, and being a hundred and three. The Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, I have enjoyed being busy." William had four brothers, Leroy, Walter, Charles, James, and sister Eunice Irene. Whereas with little more than eighth-grade education, his early work in life included five years on the Joe Cook's Farm and the L and N Railroad, followed by the Tennessee Book Company in Nashville, Tennessee. Whereas William became a member of Mays Chapel Missionary Baptist Church in nineteen-thirty-two, where he has served almost seven decades as a deacon. He was the first chairman of the deacon of board and continued to serve at the Mays Chapel Church to this very day. Whereas in nineteen-forty-eight, he was united in marriage to Ms. Nellie Vaola, Tally. They raised four children, Walter, Larry, Lonnie, and Patricia. Mr. Larry is with him today. The couple were married for an astonishing seventy-four years until her death in twenty-twenty-two. Whereas in nineteen-forty-two, Mr. William was drafted to the military where he served the United States Army for three and a half years. He began his military career as a private and worked himself up to corporal in the Army Quartermaster Corps. He was stationed at Camp Kilmore, New Jersey, Camp Shanks, New York, Staten Island as well. He was selected to Leadership School for Non-Commissioned Officers at Fort Hamilton in Brooklyn, New York, and graduated in August of twenty-five of nineteen-forty-five. Mr. William was honorable discharged from the Army in March of nineteen-forty-six. Whereas following the Army, Mr. William returned to Mount Juliet and learned several trades. He worked at auto mechanic school for six months, welding for three months, tailoring school for eighteen months, and became a tailor instructor upon completion of the course after fourteen months. He returned to Tennessee Book Company in nineteen-fifty-one and worked until his retirement date until nineteen-eighty-nine, for a total of thirty-eight years of service. During this time, Mr. William continued his education and attended Wilson County Adult High School from nineteen-sixty-nine to nineteen-seventy-two, where he completed his course with work with straight A's. Whereas a hundred and three years, he has provided the opportunity to work, raise a family, and serve his country. It has also given him time to enjoy some of his favorite hobbies like fishing, gardening, and yard work. To this day, he remains self-sufficient and drives himself. William likes to say, "Being connected to the source of life, I feel my connection," and has been my life. When I look back, faith and grace work together. Now therefore, round the huddle, Wilson County Mary, do hereby honor and congratulate Mr. William H. Bender as he celebrates a hundred and three years. May God continue to bless him with good health and surround him with those that he loves. Please help me congratulate Mr. Bender. Mr. Bender, it is an honor to have you in our presence tonight. I asked him did he want to come up there and he said, "You want me to walk or run." I said, "Well, let's just, we'll just stay right there." But thank you so much for being in our presence and giving us the role model that you have given us for all these years. Thank you so much for that. This time, I'd like to bring to the front and introduce Mr. William, Natalie, and Sarah Cooper. They're coming up to the front. I left somebody out. That's my fault. I let you introduce that young man so I don't get in trouble. They're citizens that have been taken care of by a group of WEMA folks. And they found it in their presence to say, "Want to come and just speak before you tonight." We don't get too many things like this, and so this is a great honor for them to be here. I'm going to ask at this time our WEMA personnel, Tyler Brown, Cameron Hawkins, Chase Harper, Jacob Asher, with WEMA, to come forward, please. These are the men of the crew that they will be honoring. I'll also ask any commissioner that's with WEMA tonight that'd like to stand in honor here, and Chief Newberry, I know you're out there, if you'd like to come up front as well. Director Cooper is under the weather. So, but any of my WEMA personnel that is commissioner, Commissioner Hobbs, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Scruggs, y'all would come and just stand in honor with these. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. William. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. William.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this opportunity to speak here tonight. On January 15th, you guys recall, we had a pretty heavy snow event in this county. My wife and I received a phone call that evening that no parent ever wants to receive. She had been playing and begged us to play at a friend's house during the snow event, so we let her stay the night. What could possibly go wrong? Well, we got the call that the paramedics and stuff were on the way. She had been in a tubing accident. They were being pulled, and she had been thrown into a tree. So we started to make our way toward the back of Mann Road, and we knew the paramedics were on the way. When we got there, we arrived about the same time as the WEMA team did, and we realized that the site where the accident was, was where we couldn't get right to. We had to park our vehicles and start making our way that direction as best we could. Luckily, some people in some four-wheel-drive vehicles picked us up as we were heading that way. We get there and realize that she had had a pretty serious injury. You know, at first, knew it was either a hip break or worse than that, a femur break. In all actuality, she had broke her femur in two pieces. The, once the WEMA team arrived on the scene, the calm that set in the room was amazing. You know, for two parents in the shape that we were in at that point. It was just the professionalism when they walked in the room, assessed her, calmed us. And the other two gentlemen that arrived as well, they were starting to plan, make a plan to get us out of there. How are we gonna load her up? How are we gonna get going? All kinds of questions were being answered. The whole time, they're talking to her and telling her she's gonna be okay. So the whole process of them immobilizing her, keeping her safe, keeping us calm, discussing with us, I'll never forget Tyler and I talking, and my wife as well, you know, "I think she should go to Vanderbilt Children's downtown." And I looked him right in the eye, I'm like, "Can you make it? Can you get there?" And he looked at me, it was one of those moments where you didn't want somebody to say, "I think so." He looked me right in the eye, he said, "Yes, sir, I can get there." And they did. They got there extremely fast. I don't know how. But their efforts, their work, and honestly, just a regular Monday to these guys, aided so much in her recovery. It's absolutely amazing what the team at Vanderbilt did. The fact that she walked in here tonight, I mean, she was tired of using the walker on Friday, so here we are. But, you know, we have gone from being in a wheelchair to a walker to, she's gonna make a full recovery. Gonna make a full recovery. And if you saw the x-rays that we did, you wouldn't believe it. And just the calm, the courage, the fact, and I don't want to leave anybody out, the fact that the dispatcher got the address right, that they dispatched from two separate stations. And I, you know, I put a lot of thought into this. I told the wife, I said, "Is that because maybe one of them didn't make it?" And I'm sure they would rather have been home playing in the snow with their children. But I can't express the amount of appreciation, the impact that you've made on our family. And please, never, ever doubt the importance of your role and your job. And I'll close with our family dinner discussion this weekend was how blessed we are to live in a country where you can just dial three little digits on the phone, and somebody's gonna come running in five different directions to come help you. It's an absolute blessing. Again, thank you for this opportunity.
You introduce the person I left out.
This is my son, Gabriel Cooper.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and taking the effort. I know Mark Hindley had a part of making sure that you guys got here tonight, but we appreciate this because this makes our job a lot better. We hear lots of complaints from time to time, but this really makes it special, and thank you so much for what you do for us. Thank you.
Do you mind if I say something?
Please.
I'm in trouble. From a mother's heart, deep down, I realize that this accident could have been much worse than what it was. We have a broken femur. She now has a bionic leg. But the kindness that was shown to our family and the professionalism, I cannot stress enough. And to take it all the way back to the people that are training you guys, your whole team across Wilson County, I can just imagine everybody is as fantastic as you guys. I have done nothing but brag on you guys. And I know, I'm a teacher, and I know that you probably do not get the thank yous that you deserve on a regular basis. And we just wanted to make sure that you here thank you, and we appreciate you. And we are blessed to have this team here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you so much for being here. Tonight on your desk, Commissioners, you will see a red lock, which is a gun lock. These locks were provided by the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security. They are currently offered to any citizen available upon request at the Driver's Service Center and the Tennessee Highway Patrol District Headquarters. These gun locks will take care of a 15-inch cable that would take care of shotguns, rifles, pistols, and revolvers. Director Long, Jeff Long, is the one that made these available to our office in order to be able to give them to you, and we want to do that as a little bit of a publicity to get them to, the word out to the public. And then, of course, if you could share that, that would be fantastic. I was gonna do a presentation that Rhonda Denton had asked me to do, a little bit about how the fair and the act center relates, but since he is not here tonight, I am not gonna do that because a lot of the questions that I, I know he had asked me was gonna be covered, so I'm gonna wait till he comes back to do that. So I'm gonna move forward if I can with elections and appointments. Notaries, Mr. Goodall? Everybody good? Do you hear a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
EMA met February 6th at 5:00 o'clock upstairs here in the conference room. I make a motion, the minutes will be received and filed.
Say aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Emergency Management Director's report, Chief Newberry. Yes, sir.
Commissioners. So just a kind of an update on Station 3. They're supposed to be working on the sewer this week. Maybe next week will be fully on the sewer at that particular station, and Station 10 is somewhere in the future. I'm not really sure what the deadline is on that currently. You have the call volume in your packet. Of course, working on budgetary stuff for the upcoming year, and that's really about it, unless you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none? All in favor, oh, Commissioner Breeze.
Yep. Real quick, I just noticed in the packet that we've only got three vacancies right now, so...
I believe that is correct. We have, I think there was 10 or 11 that started orientation two weeks ago. They're currently doing their FTO rides, and I believe that's, it's either two or three will be at that point. We just actually got one from Metro, so that's saying quite a bit.
Excellent. I just wanted to say thank you, because I know that this has been a long road.
Oh, thank y'all.
Where we were having all kinds of staffing problems and issues, and you guys really took the bull by the horns and fixed our situation. So three vacancies is much to be committed. So thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Chief, I'd just like to take this opportunity to publicly thank WEMA for their prompt response to a fire at my brother's farm this past week. I don't know how many crews we had, but there was a bunch of them, and they got it out before it could get a lot worse than it was. So I'd like to thank WEMA and the Wisconsin Sheriff's Department, because there were deputies out there feeding the flames out too, so.
Yes, sir. They help us a lot on those scenes initially when they get there, so thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief Newberry. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
No report.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl. Appreciate you.
County Commissioners, your reports in your packet, pretty much the call volume's up, civil warrants are up, civil warrants served are up, everything else is pretty much on par for the month of January. Roadside pickup, we've had some cold weather and snow going on the past month, so we're trying to catch up on that again. If you have any, tell us now, because we'll be pretty busy here the next few months trying to play catch-up over the winter, from the winter. School resource officers are steadily staying busy. They're, what they've been doing is there in your report. And I want to remind everybody, last month, I told you, I think it was last month, the month before, told you about this active shooter drill we had at Grand Hills High School. It was a success. I think Director Luttrell, all his personnel was down there, as well as every agency in the county. Just want to tell y'all, March 11th, we will be, while school is out for, I reckon it'll be called spring break, we'll be at Watertown High School doing the same type of scenario in the eastern part of the county. I invite y'all to come and observe. Can't let you actually see the inside while we're doing it, but observe what's going on outside. It's a real eye-opener. And we put some things in place with the school systems, both school systems, Commissioner Kurtz. We will be planning one for the city school system for long, but it's all about protecting our kids, and that's, we'll be doing these periodically throughout the year. Jail construction, it's, I hope we're about a month off in redoing the older part of the jail. They got one section of it done here pretty close now, so I'll be glad when that's said and done. You said something about staffing. Our staffing is pretty much full as we speak today, except for one, the mayor hired Lieutenant Gatlin back there for me. I'll have to fix that. But it's, we are pretty much fully staffed now, so that tells you something. It's working. Things are working. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions. I would like to say one more thing. Quentin Smith, as the mayor said before, listen, Quentin was my friend, and he did, he had a heart as big as Texas, and he helped me out a lot, and he's helped several y'all out in this room, and I'm gonna miss him. And them shoes are gonna be hard to fill, so our thoughts and prayers goes out to his family. That concludes my report.
Motion to approve.
I got the motion second. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, Sheriff, can you elaborate on the SRA Division in your report? It had two school threats, shooting two. Can you elaborate on that?
That's the entire, that's the entire juvenile services division, okay? It's not just schools. And I saw that on there, and I thought the same thing, but what that is, you know, we've responded as a sheriff's office to two shootings involving juveniles outside of schools.
Not in the schools.
Not in the schools. But that's entirely involving juveniles.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mr. Sheriff. Again, I'd just like to thank your deputies for helping do double-duty as fire control officers as well. And another quirky little incident that I had on my farm, the very next morning at 5:00, where some folks from Ohio decided to turn one of my fields into an impromptu bed and breakfast. So thanks for the prompter spots on that.
I always say, something about them, they look at a map and they go, "We're going there." And usually in Wilson County somewhere, and it's usually in Commissioner Weathers' district, but yeah. But you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions on bread and breakfast? All in favor, say aye.
Did they feed you? Okay.
I didn't feed them yet.
Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met February 15th here in the courthouse. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Say aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools' report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have my report in front of you. Just an update on enrollment. It has slowed down a little, but I do want to point out, since January, coming back from break, we have enrolled 95 new students. And just to put that in perspective, I was talking with, it was a superintendent meeting, there's a lot of districts in Tennessee that won't get 95 new students in a year, and they're growing. So we're sitting at 20,484, and we expect that number of registered students beginning for next year, and still seeing those numbers climb. Increment weather days, we do have six left. I know you get a lot of questions. That's where our teachers, our students, state of Tennessee allows us to work extra, and we, if we, we can use that for increment weather or sickness. So we started the year with 12. We work enough time for 13. We use one for professional development day, and then the rest are sitting there to be used, and we did use six of them. Want to report that during that time in your buildings, there was no major damage, and that's important. You know, a lot of people was wondering, that last day, we went a two-hour late, which was needed, but the day previously, we had all of our maintenance crew in checking buildings for pipes, and we had very limited, just minor, I'm talking, just took two or three hours to get everything ready to go. And that's testament to you and the investment you're making in our schools and these building projects, and that's important. Probably the biggest news for this month is we have rolled out our first weapons detection system. You know, we've tried to get it out to our parents, and I want to give you some feedback what that is. If you've been anywhere to a ballgame, a concert in the last few months, you've walked through it. And so something we've been watching, looking at, investigating. I've had numerous meetings last year with all types of devices that promote school safety, and we decided that we wanted a layer to provide layers. And in our budget last year, if you remember, we earmarked $2 million for safety. And you know me, some of you know me, I found four sitting in a place for the school district. I don't know what happened. They ordered them and didn't pay for them, and I got them at half price, so I told them, "Bring me them four on." And we have started, we trained all of our high school administrators. They went through the training, and we started a couple of weeks ago at Wilson Central. And it's a challenge in these big high schools of running everybody through. The day I was there was day there, I was there for training, and then I went back, just dropped in on a Friday morning, and they were 15 minutes late getting, for the final student got through, and that was really due to late buses. It's a look that you may not, I didn't like it. I sat there and thought, 30 years, whoever thought I'd be seeing kids come through this? And they just walked through, and it is, it is a, it's gonna detect the gun. That's what we're after. And our thought is, the first level of providing safety in our schools, gotta keep them out of our schools. There's a lot of things we can't do to keep them out, but if we do this, we know that we stand a chance of catching that. I'd like to thank Sheriff Bryan, thank you, got out of here as SROs. We've had meetings with them. We're continuing debriefings with our administrators, and we got one this week. Things they're learning about this system to try to make it more efficient. I will let you know the response has been overwhelmingly positive from parents. I cannot tell you, in the three years, I've received more communication, just thank you. We want to thank you for this step. And we will be, we're looking at getting some more ordered, and we will be putting this in our high schools, and we will be looking at our big middle schools. And I'm not happy to report that we need that, and it is a big expense, but as you can see, what's going on around our communities, we want to keep these weapons out of our schools at all cost. And we're committed to it, our administrators are committed to it, our teachers. So I do want to give you a report on that. When it comes to your school, there will be some issues. It takes a few days just to figure the logistics out. We're still working on settings. The great thing is, our kids train themselves. That Friday morning, I stand there, they're just coming in, and if they had a ball bath, they're just pulling it out. They were putting their Chromebooks above their head so it wouldn't pick it up. And even had some students that, as they passed by, "Thank y'all for doing this." Thank you, thank you. So just want to give you a report on that, and we will be adding more of these in our schools. Adult Learning Center, some news from that. Encourage you Thursday night, we'll have a presentation, our work session, from Sandy Anderson, who heads up our Adult Learning Center. They're located over in the old central office building there on Stumpy Lane. We have 210 ESL students that are currently going through our program, and part of the pathway of that program is that they are citizenship classes. We have 25 students that have started this process. It's a five-month class that's a part of our learning that will prepare them to pass the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services Naturalization Interview and Test. And it is a pathway, if you're gonna come take ESL classes with us, we're gonna put you on that pathway to becoming a U.S. citizen. And we take that for granted. Some things I've learned about this program, remember what I said, it's a five-month class to prepare them, and it is... And we take that for granted, some things I've learned about this program, remember what I said, it's, it's a, a five-month class to prepare them, and it is strenuous of what they go through, learning about our government, civics, all the branches, our constitution, where that they, and, and we have, and I know you know this, we've got a lot of professional people in Wilson County from other places, and I'm talking doctors and teachers and lawyers that practice for years in their country, and then when they come here, they're starting over, some of them are working for me as aides. And so, we're excited about this, and, and able to offer this part of our adult learning. I encourage you to tune in Thursday night, and she will be giving a presentation on that. Construction project updates, Wes Wilson, you have pictures, I've got colored pictures, I don't think you get those, but if you've been by there lately, it's coming along nicely. Really a nice building, everybody's wanting to know when, we had a meeting last week, still waiting on, just scheduled, it's gonna be sometime in April before we get the bleachers and the auditorium seats, but they're in there, putting on the finishes touches, everybody's wanting to know, and I've not even told the board, but I will not move schools during testing, and we're not gonna move in that biddle, building to the punch list, it's final, and we know that everything's ready to go, our paving and everything, so we'll just play that on out, but we're not gonna get in it, I thought, I was wanting to be in it in two weeks, that's not gonna happen, and possibly could be summertime before we get control of that building. But I think when you see it, you'll be proud of it, and, and for what it's gonna offer, for the amount of students and the space, it's, it's a really nice facility. Mount Juliet renovation is still coming along nicely, think about, I want, I just want to thank our construction companies doing that, our administrators of both schools, we've got two schools, they're having to do the work after hours, but it is starting to shape up and come along nicely as well. Lagarto Elementary, if you've been by there, there's a lot of dirt on that site, it's amazing, was out there for a meeting last week, could not believe the amount of dirt, they couldn't even believe the amount of dirt, and good dirt. The pad is complete, expected, they were expecting to hopefully try to start pouring footers this week, but I looked at the, I don't know if the weather will allow that, but it, but it's coming along nicely. There are your updates on your construction projects, and that is my report.
Motion approved.
Got a motion second. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, Mr. Luttrell, on the, you say, teaching English as a sex language to these people, fine.
Yes.
Do we have any indication, or do we have any numbers on the illegals that are bringing students to our schools?
We, we don't keep up with that, but federal law, we can't. And, you know, these people that are in our program, to go through that citizenship program, you have to be documented.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, but no, we, we don't, we, we cannot request any of that.
Okay.
We educate all kids, as they come in the door.
We don't know.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dowd?
I've just had one question about the bus accident today, any injuries?
No injuries, we did have a bus run off the road, out near, did some damage to the bus, but now, the last I got was they, we were going through the protocol, we didn't come and check every student out, but I have not heard of any injuries, no.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers?
The Chairman of the Public Works Committee met Thursday, February 15th, here at courthouse, and the minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Act Center Management Report, Commissioner Scruggs.
Which one?
Act Center Management.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze?
Animal Control met on Thursday, February 15th, at 5:00 PM, in the upstairs conference room, the minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Audit, Commissioner Glover?
No report.
Wrong Band, Commissioner Franklin?
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown?
Our committee met on Thursday, February 15th, you have a copy in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Ethics, Commissioner Dowd?
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarlane?
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry?
Judicial Committee met on January 22nd, the minutes are in your package, I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarlane?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Keat?
Rules Committee met tonight, at 6:30, February 26th, it'll be made available next county commission meeting.
Thank you. Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board met February the 2nd, 24, minutes are in your packet, be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Legislative Ad Hoc Committee, Commissioner Costley?
Legislative Ad Hoc Committee met Thursday, February 22nd, upstairs conference room, minutes are in your desk, I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Mader?
Finance Report's in your packet, a couple of things I need to just mention real quick, the audit is done, we do have an audit committee meeting coming up in March, I don't remember the exact date, 12th, somebody say 12th? March 12th, 5:00?
6:00.
6:00. March 12th at 6:00, the audit committee meeting coming up. Also, just want to say how much I personally will miss Quentin, and he spent some time in my office telling stories, and wonderful man, and I, I miss him terribly. I will say this about Quentin, and I think he would get a kick out of it. I'd rather argue with anybody in this world than Quentin Smith.
He did.
Wow. And the bill that's been proposed to limit a local government's ability to increase property taxes, a lot of people have been working on that, county mayor's association, Sheriff's Association, I'm school, the educators, I'm sure the educators' association, et cetera. I believe the comptroller's office has come in as well now, and I'm pretty sure that bill will not see the light of day, however, we are still monitoring it. So, I just want to, I have not spoken about that previously, sort of waiting to see what would happen, and I don't think that bill is going anywhere now, so if anything changes, I will let you know. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Motion approved.
Second. I got a second, any discussion? Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mader. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met February the 15th, here at the courthouse, minutes are in your packet, move they be received and filed.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 24-2-5, amending the Resolution 23-2-10, adopting the 2021 edition of the International Building Code, the Residential Code, the Fire Code, the National Fire Protection Agency 101 Life Safety Code, the International Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Fuel Gas Code, and International Energy Code.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record reflected unanimously.
Resolution 24-2-6, approving the adoption of WEMA Policy 501.34, billing rates and adjustments.
Motion approved.
I got a motion to second, now, any discussion? Yeah, okay. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three, one and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-7, to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from general fund to finance for the 225th commemoration, celebration of the, I thought he said something else earlier, the founding of Wilson County.
That resolution, Chairman needs to be, need to move to substitute that one for the one that was in the packet, and vote on that, vote on substitution, then vote on the U.S. resolution.
Heard a motion to vote on the substitution?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May I vote on the regular?
Now to vote on the regular one, are you ready to vote? To have a motion?
Aye.
I got a motion to second, okay? Now a discussion. Commissioner Hall?
I'm not opposed to celebrating 225 years of Wilson County, but I am opposed to asking my neighbors to pony up the money to do it. Thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I wouldn't write a thirty thousand dollar check out of my own pocketbook for this, and I think if, you know, if you would, then go ahead and write, vote yes on it, but thirty thousand dollars could go a long way for a lot of things. You could buy about a thousand library books, a bunch of other stuff for this county that we actually need, and that's about all I got to say about it.
Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty years, four and nine.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-8, to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 24-06.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with the vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-9, to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 24-07.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three, one and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-10, authorizing the county mayor to apply for and accept the 2024 home grant.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Hall? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-11, approving a lease agreement for the General Sessions Court Clerk.
Motion approved.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three, one and five, resolution passes.
Resolution, Resolution 24-2-12, to reflect revenues received and not included in their original budget, and to amend the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-13, to reflect revenues received and not included in their original budget, and to amend the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an additional appropriation to accept tourism grant, and to appropriate funds from the revenue tourism account into tourism.
Motion approved.
Motion second, discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-14, to amend the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to judges.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Chairman? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-15, to amend the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an appropriation from general fund, to set up a reserve account for the opioid payments restricted and unrestricted.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-16, to amend the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to county buildings.
Motion.
Second. Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-17, amending the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to county attorney.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-18, amending the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make an appropriation from capital projects fund to building improvements.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Brown? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-19, amending the Budget and Appropriations Resolution for line item transfers and the building inspector and zoning codes.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-2-20, amending the Budget and Appropriations Resolution to make a line item transfer in animal control, and to appropriate funds from restricted for animal control to animal control.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second, discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dowd?
She's talking.
No doubt? No, no doubt. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. I know you've asked to be moved, and I can't move you, I'm sorry. Got a motion to go out of session.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I got one question here. I got twenty-two and twenty-three, I don't know twenty-one.
I want the honorary regulations for this.
Fantastic, go ahead.
Resolution 24-2-22, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, requesting members of the legislative delegation to the General Assembly to support House Bill 1795 and Senate Bill 1660 as introduced, to create a national disaster relief program to be administered by the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, for the benefit of providing grants to offset the cost of natural disasters.
Motion approved.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-2-23, requesting members of the legislative delegation to the General Assembly to support Senate Bill 1710 and House Bill 1629 as introduced.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Got a motion to go back into session?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any... Any old business to come before the body, Commissioner Bernard?
I got a, on the EMA, you know, the night, the budget, they left out the surplus items.
Wrong button.
Did we get that page?
Say one more time, I'm sorry.
EMA, you know, the night, in the budget meeting, they didn't put in many of the surplus items. Did we get, in budget, voted for?
Yeah, you don't have to bring it here. Okay.
It was here.
EMA committee and budget committee.
Commissioner Hall?
This being under new business.
My man, any other old business to come before the body? Any new business, Commissioner Hall?
I'd just like to invite everybody out to Watertown, Watertown High School Theater Department, they've put together a historic Watertown walking tour and guide, that it's really, really spectacular, they're still working on some aspects of it, and there's a pamphlet I'm going to email everybody just to get that out to you, and I just wanted to put a plug in for them and invite you out to Watertown to experience that walking tour from the theater department out of Watertown, thank you.
Commissioner Costley?
Yeah, next meeting we have, I think we got a pretty big zoning issue coming up on Tucker's Crossroads, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Is that not coming up next?
I have not heard, Mr. Thomas said no.
I was, I was just wanting to know if our zoning maps are up to date.
Zoning maps are up to date, yes. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Just die, anything?
We'll be back three weeks from tonight.
And next Rules Committee meeting, if you can give me the authority to move Commissioner Dow away from Commissioner Weathers, I'll be glad to do that, but I have to have your authority. Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.